We're back in open session with a a motion to go back in open session for Carla Kinney Cross and seconded by Ben Win. The unanimous decision, now we are in open session. We are at Pledge of Allegiance. What's our flag over there?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, as part of the greater Glendale River Hills community, the school district will lead in a creative, creating a supportive learning environment to inspire all students to strive for excellence in pursuing a strong academic foundation, feed in and contribute to the global community. We believe change is an opportunity for growth. Each individual has unique potential to learn.
High expectations, effort, and motivation are essential to learn.
Cooperation, communication, and collaboration strengthen our home, school, and community.
We believe diversity is massive.
Hey. Uh, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda, but I would like to move the present, the president's president's report in between two A and two B.
So. Sorry, second.
Move back. I, I made the motion. So second, I made the motion second if I've been when any discussion. I will tell you why I want to move just because I have, we're doing the thank yous. I want to get my little farewell speech out of the way, and then we can keep going and move on to business and we don't have to do any of this other stuff. Sure. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we're going to do to a congratulations and thanks.
Okay, so I want to, I'm going to reverse the order a little bit. So we've got some huge congratulations and thank yous. And I want to start with our two guests because they both requested a moment to speak to the board tonight. So.
Hi, everyone. I'm Katie Timberman. If you're not, if I haven't met you before, but I'm here to thank you so much for my experience working with you and having you as a school board has been so amazing for me. And if I haven't been able to tell you or show you, I just want you to know that you are held in such high esteem by not only myself, but all of the other staff members as well, and you are so appreciated. In my 34 years in the district, I feel so privileged. I feel it has been such an honor. And I am so happy to be part of Glendale River Hills. It's been such a really important part of my life. And I'm so grateful and thank you. It is a true privilege. And I thank each one of you. I, I'm so happy that I get to be with under Allison, Mrs. Spies. You've been so supportive and I really appreciate having my last few years with you because it's tremendous. As well with Mrs. Johnson, Lindsay has been, I was a little bit unsure. And you were absolutely so supportive and I cannot ever thank you enough. I will always remember my last years of support that you've shown me. Jenica as well. I love how you're just a go getter, always so supportive of students that have how we do this today. I haven't known you very well, but I was so impressed to meet you. I do have to do a shout out to Ms. Young and to my amazing Dr. Smith. Even though I don't have the privilege of working with Dr. Smith right now, I have worked summer academy every year for two years in my career. So that makes it 32 years. So I feel so fortunate to work with such amazing professionals and with all of you and some of your children and some of you as well. So thank you for the opportunity. You are truly amazing. The work you do makes such a big difference. I know you might not always hear that, but please know that you are so important and you are so valued. Thank you all so much. Amazing friend Lynn.
We've been working together forever at every school.
Good hope.
Yeah.
Called Parkway.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I asked Allison if it was okay. I said I wasn't sure of the protocol, but can I say something? I couldn't leave without touching base. Glendale is my other family. People ask where you live. Glendale is my home away from home. When I come to school, I will say, oh, I'm coming back home. It is like my happy place. I would like to really express my gratitude and thank the school board for the opportunity I had to teach in the Glendale River Hills School District. Working with students, family, and staff in Glendale has been an absolutely wonderful experience. I am so grateful to be a part of a district that always, always puts children first. Since the first time I was hired and came into meetings in August, we were learning about cooperative learning and celebrating each individual student. That has been so strong. Throughout my career, Glendale has worked to research. I love research and implement best instructional practices that support the whole child. I wanted to be in a district where I would be able to celebrate the professionalism that goes behind making really great school district because it's all about the kids. Thank you so much. The school board has always supported those initiatives, really considered how it would affect the children from K4 up to eighth grade and supporting the staff so we could carry those things through. And I don't say that lightly. When I wrote this, it's really from my heart and my soul and my head. The school board has been so supportive of those initiatives. I'm very proud to say I've taught in the district with outstanding school board administrators, staff, and students. I will miss you so much. I will come back and visit. Thank you for letting me share.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah, we're, oh, yeah, we're in cameras on.
Oh. I didn't know. Where's the flash?
We're going to give it a shot.
We can't see him on here.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes. This one? Is this young? We can't see you yet. Hold on.
Oh, is this just doing sound? Okay, he doesn't have.
Oh, that's okay.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, outstanding. Um, so I was doing some quick math and I guess first of all, I want to congratulate Katie and Katie and Lynn. I was doing the math on that and I was thinking like we have over 100 years experience between the three of us. That's a long time. Congratulations to those wonderful ladies and thank you for the opportunity. It has been an absolute pleasure to be in this district for over 30 years. Twenty of those 30 years, I was the only African American teacher there. And look at where we are now. And so I think the school board and administration has worked hard to create diversity and, and we are certainly moving in the right direction. And so I have the utmost confidence that Glendale River Hills will continue to move in the right direction. I'm excited about your, the future endeavors as I'm excited about the next chapter in my life. So thank you for the great journey and a wonderful opportunity and I will definitely be in touch as well. Thank you all.
Oh, yeah, I just, I'm either having a heart attack. I'm just trying not to cry. I said I wouldn't. But I just wanted to say, I mean, each of you knows how important you are to me. Lynn, you helped Jesse survive one of her first really bad years. I'll never forget what a talented and thoughtful teacher you are, which she was in third grade. And Katie, we still impersonate you in my house. Do you want to hear it?
Yes.
You get a point! When Nick was falling apart and we thought everything was going to go wrong during the pandemic, your Zoom PE class carried him through and I still don't know how. I don't know how you did it, but we heard he would put you at full volume and our whole house would yell at you. You get a point! And we would walk into his room. Anthony walked into his room one day and he was doing pushups and laughing with you on the other end. And I just, you guys have been part of survival in our family and I'm just heartbroken, relieved, but happy for you. And Mike, are you still there? I don't know if Mike is still there, but Mike, you, back when we were trying to put together family activity nights and make some, you know, community-based change, you were just stalwart in supporting us and bringing avid volunteers and just, you guys just give and give and give. And I'm so grateful for each of you and I, I'm just going to miss you.
Thank you. We're going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla, for those kind words. We appreciate it.
I'm voting no, so.
Oh, yeah, really? We can say no. Wait, wait, wait. I was just about to ask. I don't see those approvals on the agenda. No, I really don't see it. Where is it?
Consent to personnel changes.
Yeah.
Where is it?
Consent to personnel changes.
I don't see it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
I, I don't see.
Come back.
Because I don't see who it is or what it is. No, I'm dead serious right now. It just is personal changes.
It's an exact. Um, I said, I have not the privilege of knowing you very well, but I know that the job that you do is so incredibly hard. I ask so much of you guys and I, I'm heartbroken. My kids will get to experience the amazingness because I, Carla, and, and you know, I've just heard so many amazing things. And the, the service that you give and the care and education you provide for our kids is just, I mean, it's, it's incredibly important and hard job and you guys do it obviously with such positivity and love and that takes very special people to do. So thank you to all of you. Thank you.
Yeah, I've had each one of you as a teacher. I, I do appreciate everything, you know, you did for me as a, as a adolescent. I've also known some professionally and I appreciate the help you gave me there too.
Thank you. And that's the great thing about Glendale. I don't know if everyone in the community realizes that, but it is a destination, place for families to come back, for their children. Many staff members have gone through that are now my colleagues. I have taught side by side with my former students or children of people from the community. And so I think that is like an unbelievably phenomenal testament to what the school board and the staff does, that families really want to be here and fairly with what you had said, it is a huge responsibility that people trust us with their children and that calls a lot with what we need to do. So thank you. And with, you know, what Ben said, absolutely. And I think that is, you know, the best thing to be part of a community where that is celebrated.
So, so we have one more thank you, which is going to cause us to actually pause and maybe have to take a little walk into the comments. And this is, this is a thank you to. I was like, why don't we do that?
Um, I want to say my thank yous. I want to say my thank yous to first of all, the Glendale River Hills School District, City of Glendale for allowing me to represent you guys. Teachers, thank you so much for what you do. My daughter came in fifth grade and she is, she went on. And I, I really appreciate it. These are my farewell for seven years. Thank you for allowing me to be part of this community and of the kids. Whether I was in here, I did try over the last seven years to hit the schools at least once a month, twice a month, making sure that I wasn't just somebody who was a decision maker here, but making sure that I went into the schools to see what decisions needed to be made. And that was from kids sitting at the lunches with kids sometimes and asking them what they want and giving Dr. I mean, Larry a list or Dr. Weiss a list to just hearing what teachers had to say. I always want to leave a position better or a job better than when I, I, I came in. I think we, I've accomplished and we've accomplished some major things. I think every administrator I have touched or approved or hired except for Dr. Smith. So I had a touch in Jenica's when you got your your promotion. I know you were here before, but you've touched everyone else. I've either had a say in it or touched. So I believe that administration is perfect because I had. Um, we are in great financial situation compared to other schools and other districts. Our debt is down. Our debt is low. I mean, we have a decent balance. This is all because of the board that I have worked with and the work that we have done. One of the things I always wanted to do was do policy work. From the day I started, I wanted to get through that policy book. I wanted to make sure that we were in compliance and I wanted to make sure that we went through governance and and I think Andy and I talked about it so many times, but every single time something came up that we couldn't do it. And we finally did it this year. I was not going to run last year when I was up, but people called me on to do it. We were in a crisis kind of mode. It was her first year and they asked me to run and I did. And I gave everybody, I said, at least a year. I was going to try to do the three. But I think this board is perfectly fine running. They'll add somebody to it that can, can bring a new light to it. This board cares. They, they are, there's Andy who has been my, I, I called him my, my work. And I know this is long, but this is the last time you'll hear me. He was my school board husband and I even told his wife, we, we fought and they're like, leave my school board. And then we almost got divorced a year or so ago. We're in a trial separation. I decided that I have to leave him now. Um, Danielle came on. She was so curious and didn't have any because she came out of pandemic, we had no, we couldn't cater or coddle her into showing her on board itself. We threw her right into the fire and made her answer questions or make policy decisions that she didn't even have time to, to really go over, but we needed to do it. That should go before. But I really love that she will nitpick and she will go in to make sure. I mean. This is it. To be, to make sure that everything is equitable, everybody is, is, is held accountable. Ben, I looked at Ben and I went, oh my God, this boy is coming out and I said, this little boy don't know nothing. And I have probably grown closest to Ben over the last year. He will call me up. I, Ben and I have had two hour, three hour conversations literally about school board or what is it? Implicit directive.
Explicit.
Instruction. And he got me to understand and learn a lot of that. And then there's Carla Kinney Cross, which I sat and watched for years, sitting there advocating, advocating for social emotional learning, advocating for the, the students, the special needs students that we had. And a lot of times I don't think we would have made, made an impact or even thought about some of the things that we needed to if it wasn't for her. Every single time visitor participation actually saying that to us and bringing those up. Now, we have all, I've fought with pretty much everybody in here. I fought with Allison. That's my personality, but the one thing I've always, I'm not fake. I'm just going to tell you, we, it's not lovey dovey in here. The door is closed. We fight, we argue, but the thing is, the one thing that I could say about this board 100% is that they have their own way, but they're all doing it for the greater good of the kids. They're all doing it for the greater good of the teachers. I'm almost done. When I came here, there was a lot of, it was just under 50% kids of color. So when I was asked to run, they're like, they need some representation to see. And I'm like, yeah, yeah, whatever. And the only administrator was of color, I think was Ms. I Day Smith. And Mr. Birmingham was the only teacher of color. That was one of the things that I wanted to make sure we worked on. And I'm leaving in a better place than it was in. Tips for the board and a future board member. I have one really solid tip. Stick to your heart, but also remember you are making decisions for a district, not for each individual kid. We had a theme and I didn't see it on the, the website where I'm a little upset. Every child, every day, no matter what it takes, I couldn't find it. But we govern for the whole district and then we find if that governance does not match what a kid needs, then we have to give that kid what it's need, not change the policy of the whole district for one kid. We are going to give every single kid what they need. And that is the goal. Our goal here is to educate children. I, I'll be around if anybody needs me. I am still an older person, so I'll still, I'm still elected, you know, so. But I really do appreciate the seven years that I've been here in this board, especially because this was the only year that I was president and they've taught me so much in the sense of my other job. I'm a PD there and I've had to navigate some stuff with here and it actually helped me to navigate things in my private sector life. I'm not leaving because I hate anybody. I don't, I'm not leaving because I just am tired now. I'm just tired. The fight for this is not quite there anymore because I'm just exhausted for all the other stuff I do. And plus, this should be a voice of people who have kids in the district, but also can bring a different perspective. When I got on, we needed diversity. We have two people of color on here, so that takes away. I don't have any children in the district, so, but Ben doesn't have children in the district. Andy doesn't have children in the district, so that takes away why I was there. I think we have some amazing people to do what you, you do. We will get one more board member that will be appointed. I ask you to all give them choices. Please, if you are interested in this, give them choices. That is the last thing I have to say before I go into, because we moved my president's report to here. Now, as I leave, we're going to move this. I am bringing a motion and the school board is a challenging thing and it is definitely something that, and I don't think they know that I'm doing this and stuff. I want to propose that you raise the rate of the school board. It's not going to affect me. I just want to do it. Right now, the school board members get $600 a year. So that comes out to $45 a month. Let's see. And so they did the committee of the whole and I just want to break this down to the committee of the whole, but that started last month. But we used to have two committees plus a school board meeting, plus anything else that we had to meet during pandemic. We met 57 times for $600. That is one thing. And that's a lot of time because we have, we have stuff that we have to look over. We have agendas to put together and especially with the president. I met with her almost every, our Allison, every Thursday to put an update together and then on the weeks before, put an agenda together. So I'm, I'm proposing that it go to $1,000 a year with the president getting $1,500. The reason I'm also proposing this is this is something that you can decide if you're a board member, if you want that one. You can always decline it, but I do in a space of equity. I do not want somebody who can't afford to do the daycare or can't afford to do some, that could be money for daycare so someone else can sit at this table. I don't want that to be a deterrent. And I know Brian Kennedy, when he left, he said the exact same thing. I will vote every single time to raise money for this because you can decide as a board if you want to take it, but don't take it away from somebody else who may need it, but want to sit on it. So my, I would like to make a motion to and because we, and just because I have a particular person here. We can do this at the exact time. I have checked with lawyers. I do not have to wait until the annual meeting. This can be brought up at any given time and implemented, but I do not want to vote on my, you know, bring it up and then I'm leaving. So these are for my, my, my colleagues, the people that are on the board and then the future person. So my motion is to raise the school board effective July 1st. Well, I, in the, in this third year, July 1st, 2023 to $1,000 for school board members, 1,500 for school board president. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Dana. Wait, I, I do it by the rules, audience. Do you have anything to say? Because that's how we go, the audience. Do you have anything to say about this particular thing? Yes, Rob Cronwell, can you please say your name and your address?
Sure. Robert Cronwell, 7530 North Appleton Lane. I've been coming to these meetings for about seven years now and it was one of the first eye-opening and enlightening speeches I ever heard that Tamika made to the board about the equity component of school board salary. I was kind of one of those people's like, yeah, really? And then she gave her speech seven years ago or six years ago and I was like, well, of course, yes. If somebody has to get a babysitter or whatever, especially because I'm one of the people that feels there should be more parents on boards, people who have kids in the district. And it's hard, especially when they're this age to be able to, to, to do this kind of thing. And I, I've really appreciated that and taken it to heart and fully support.
Is that recorded? Rob is, I, I love Rob. We have fought, we have argued, we have, but we hit his, he's helped us at times where we didn't know the stuff right and then it's time to roll my ass. That's just. Uh, any other people who would like to say anything?
I'll say something as a community member. Katie Timberman, 7227, or your. And I would say it is so well deserved. And I would be for it. You deserve, you deserve. You do so much for the community. You're all amazing.
Andy, wait. That's, anybody else? Carla? I have nothing. Ben, Danielle?
I have some memory of us.
Allison, no, just kidding. Andy, are they supposed to vote on it? No, we do.
Just two things. First of all, I mean, I'm not going to vote on this one or the other. It's really not, but the benefit of the new people here and for the future talent that may come on board, I think it makes more sense to have salaries be modified to go long term, not with the fiscal year. So it should be really May to May or May to April rather, rather than, you know, July to June. That's my.
I will take that friendly amendment and make it starting.
You will accept my friendly amendment that I will not be voting on it. I'm not.
No, no, okay, fine. We just make it to where the time starts, which is term. Which the term officially starts April what?
Twenty-third, third, to say, fourth, to say this month.
Whatever that the term is, we'll be specific about it. It's April something.
It should be the end of the first month, which would be May. So that's what I'm thinking, May to April.
So can we not add for that?
Well, it's a matter of starting in May. You know what? Let me state differently. Starting in May instead of starting in July. Because who knows what will happen. But I think that that adjustment, if you're going to do it, you start in May with the new terms. That's what it means.
With the new terms, could you, that is a friendly motion. I made the motion. Is it okay to accept it then?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote on this.
You made my reading glasses fall off.
Uh, Lindsay, since you are the current, please call their name out and have them vote. I will be last according to our policy.
Pass.
No, no, no. If there's no passing, either just yes, no, or abstain.
Fine, I will, uh, I will abstain.
Danielle Bailey.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. And I see I, that is four to zero to one. Please put this in the notes. It passes. So thank you. Um, that is the one thing, that's the last thing I needed to accomplish as board president, and now we can keep going. Uh, superintendent goals.
Um, so I attached a draft of goals for twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, with the caveat that we may be looking at something different after the summer. Uh, so I have, I stuck with the rubric categories for everything except for the last area, which was student growth. Because we, one of the recommendations from this year is evaluation of something tied to student growth. Uh, but I looked at it more like a process goal. So some of the work we're gonna do around strategic planning, professional development planning, our continued sales work, the equity work. S E L mental health staff. So I listed some things in there. So obviously, if the goals were approved, I would then flush out more specific strategies and have to retract them similar to what I did before. And then I'd bring that back for you guys to look at again. Um, so the goals that I have are relationships with the board, foster professional collaborative learning relationship with the board. And so I wanted to weave in some of the, um, recommendations and feedback around, like, leading the board through professional development to being a guide. So that's why I added the learning relationship piece. Uh, community relations, soliciting feedback, data and information to manage issues and make appropriate decisions. So that was a combination of a couple of the areas of the rubric around being able to predict things that are coming, gather data, and have a process for decision-making. So I put those pieces into that one. Um, staffing personnel relationships, leverage the talents and leadership potential of staff. So that was some of the pieces around delegation and fostering leadership at different tasks to other people. And then obviously always I've had to support a positive district culture because I think that's the foundation for everything. Um, business and finance, oversee financial resources and facilities. Um, since we've got some big work coming up in that area to ensure that they're aligned to and support the educational program and goals for our students. Um, personal qualities, provide transparent, clear, thoughtful communication and problem solving. And then the student growth goal, which implement other systems that support student growth. So those are my proposed.
This is where we are going to add anything. She gave us that list of, of things. Uh, one thing I would suggest that you start as you have that, um, that word document that you always have and you keep on doing that, showing that what your goals are, adding into them, changing them out. And then make, showing your proof of your goals as you do them.
And I will bring that back.
And bring that back every time. And I know they're going to be reevaluating this whole thing and how they evaluate you over again. But this is a good start on what your goals are. Um, does anybody have anything to add? Danielle?
Yeah. I, I wanted to take Tamika's suggestion and say that we just remove the personal qualities altogether.
Yeah.
From the rubric, which just, just makes the whole thing. Uh, I would say just like maybe three really small things. So there's, uh, there's one, where's the public image? Is that staff? Community relations. Uh, I, my suggestion would be to like possibly remove this positive public image. And sort of add something around, uh, like meaningful engagement or collaboration with community. Not everybody's gonna like everything you do. But if they're meaningfully involved and we're collaborating, then I think more people will buy it and get off the work or something. So I don't think we should focus on that will come publicly.
Danielle, may I just say one thing about that? And that means also not just necessarily the school district. I know you, you're trying to work with the one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary committee. Add those things in there. So it's not just the school district, but city of Florida as a whole.
And then I have one more, which was around, uh, finance, business and finance. So I don't know if this is just like an ad or working in some way, but communicates budgetary implications and priority to board and community, like something in terms of like. Name it starts for this one. Like that, like that idea. I said, yeah. And then connecting budget to district vision and goals. Something around that.
Yeah, Danielle and I were talking about that before with like this overall impact proportionally, things like that.
Yeah.
Those are my other words. Sorry.
So they're basically saying finance budget for dummies.
Yeah.
You can make your own little book. But I'm talking about as the book goes, you know, like, I'm just saying, just as a book. Just as the book, not to dummies, you know?
I know, I know.
Robert Koenig for dummies.
Yes.
But also. Both like specific.
So I, I fully agree. Personal qualities is, that wraps me around. But the goal of providing transparent, clear, and thoughtful communication, good problem solving, it's a nice goal to have, but I would. When I think about that, I think like Danielle was saying about, um, engagement, like collaborative engagements. So I just wonder if you could put that idea about problem solving somewhere else. And I see something in there about combining three and four into one communication. I don't know what that means, but.
That was for the right clearly, it's like a sleepless ability to speak. Like, I thought those were kind of weird and it's very communication.
But the idea of, you know, collaboratively communicating and all that, it's, it's woven in here. I have to admit, with me trying to wrap my head around budget stuff today, I didn't give much thought to that. I didn't spend a lot of time thinking about this. And if we're gonna be redoing it, it's June or July. I don't know how much you want me to.
So could you see that goal under personal qualities perhaps be strategy in both staff and personal relationships and community?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's why I can see it just moving.
One thing that I was, are you done? Yeah, I mean, I, I guess the last thing I would just add is if, if we are gonna rethink this, you know how I feel about the rubrics. I have a lot of mixed feelings. I, I don't, I don't know how, I'm not committed to it. So I, I don't wanna see you spin wheels. You know, putting together detailed ideas about this if we're gonna revisit it, do something more collaborative later. So I just want you to know, I haven't given it a ton of thought.
I appreciate that.
So the goals are the goals. How you evaluate her is something else. But, um, I also, when you do evaluate and it's kind of goals, when you do do that work, I would suggest you define certain things. Your definition of collaboration might be completely different than the board's definition of collaboration. So some of those words that are used, collaboration and, uh, you know, group effort or whatever it is. You should probably define some of those, those terms to what you mean by that. Andy, Ben, any other thing?
I have that one thing.
So with this, I think those are the goals that you have. I don't know if you wanna vote on them or not, but what we can do is you can bring them back. Kind of in the consent agenda for next month. So you exactly know what you're.
And I'll share like updated iterations of the update. Like, um, just wanna understand what the process would be to switch to, if we wanna ensure laws and evaluation, like, do we need to have that? How discussion and that work.
We could do, I could bring this updated to kind of what we have.
Anything else? Okay, we're gonna go to three A. We hope we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So I will move to approve the consent agenda with the caveat that the, it's the item number. Item F, budget resolution, um, has a couple non-substantive typos that I've told Allison about, that she's going to correct. Like an extra word in the last whereas, a superfluous fourth whereas.
We have a second.
I'll second.
So if I can be all in favor?
Aye.
New business for a.
Construction manager. So we are in the final stage of the phase one. It'd be a tough vote. We, our architect, uh, Katie is hoping at our owner, crap, and the last piece was, uh, Mid North is the one that we are bringing to the board. So, uh, with the interview, there were many different groups that brought lots of experience. A lot of support from our current district. The reason that the north stood out for us, where they had a very shared idea and vision for the district. They really aligned with what we are looking to do. During our facility study, uh, one of the other pieces they talked about is when they are looking to, uh, do any projects, they bring in all sorts of different from within the cities and really try to hire contractors in very diverse fields. That was one of the other pieces that we really liked about this firm. They have a lot of experience with marketing as well. And just being able to share a lot.
And it's the same as the other two, that there's a phase one proposal. And should we get through phase one and decide when that will be forward with anything else? We don't have.
Go ahead, um, wait. Audience. You have anything to say about this? Okay, I just. Motion.
Motion to, I'll motion to approve the recommendation for the construction manager.
Motion by, now set there by Carla. Sorry, audience, anything to say? No? All right, Andy.
There's a paragraph, the administrative, uh, content, which I'm not very comfortable with. The, for our purposes, I just want to clarify the recommendation. This recommendation has to refer to, to, to documents. You know, the, the document, uh, discussed is a reference to what was. Just to clarify, I think I asked this last week, this does not lock. It's, we're not, we're not required to work ten hours with them. Or twenty, like, do you use them or when? But, but there's no like minimum requirement of a certain number of hours. Okay.
Any other discussion? And a call for a vote. All in favor? Pose. Same. The five to zero. Five to zero motion carries or motion passes. Let's see, where are we? We're on a roll here. Salary schedule. But we should be able to slide this very quickly. Allison. I'll give anything to say.
No, we brought the salary schedule several times to the committee of the whole. They were attached to board updates. We got discussion. And how can you guys? Bring in motions.
All right, so motion. I will make the motion to approve the teacher's salary schedule attached to item four B in the agenda. That's a, we have a second.
Second.
It was, I'm gonna say, Carla, make the motion. Danielle seconded it. I heard Danielle. Audience. Or Ben?
Yeah, okay. So I, I do think we're going in the right direction here. Before it was way too low. Now we're, uh, at a starting point that's a lot better. I, I do have concerns about only, I talk about this publicly, how much we're going up by.
You can do whatever you want, Ben. Go ahead.
Well, okay, I, I have concerns about those rates we're going up. Uh, because for example, uh, had I been in my last district, I would have been making more money there than here. Uh, now that's not totally true with the master's degree component. So, you know, I, I guess maybe we're balancing there. But I think we're moving in the right direction with this. So that's great. Uh, but you know, I, I do think that it deserves, you know, reconsideration for next year.
Anyone else on the salary schedule?
Oh, sorry, one more thing. So in the policy, we wrote that you get eight thousand dollars more for a master's degree. So then how do you deal with that? Is this just a starting point? So if someone has a bachelor's and they just get it, okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The motion carries five to zero. Next, we're going to go to, we have a bunch of motions for this particular day. I have them. Okay, go ahead.
Should we just go?
Yeah, just. Okay, so the second motion is to approve a four percent CPI increase for teachers. Second. So it is moved by Carla, across, seconded by Danielle. Audience. Yes.
So I noticed there was a post it for last year. I take it that say, oh, from a year before, or not even represented, did they certify or no, or?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That it? Off topic, because we were talking about salary. So that's okay. I, on these topics, so you haven't been here in a while. We only talk about, because we did visitor participation, we do a motion, we get visitor participation on that issue. You didn't know?
My question was because there's differences if you're represented or not represented. I wanted to know what category.
Okay, so we still, that's, you should, we're just, we're still going for that. Okay. I get to mess with them for the last time. Any other discussion on the board? Kayla, all in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero. Next motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, so the next motion on my list is the motion to approve a four percent CPI increase for administrators.
So real quick.
Hold on, hold on. Can't do anything yet. That's like we are.
I know, that's, yeah, we.
We have to do it by support staff first.
Point of order. Can I just do a point of order real quick? For the licensed staff, we need to talk about salary scale adjustment. Point of order. Can I just do a point of order real quick? For the licensed staff, we need to talk about salary scale adjustments. We didn't make a motion to do that, but we did. Didn't we?
We passed the salary.
But I thought this said, it said, discussion and or action for that.
Once it is.
Recommended the board approve C P I increases of four percent in any salary scale adjustments for licensed staff.
Okay, so we split it out. So we did split it out. Okay.
Don't read that one.
I was trying. Okay, so that's a separate motion. So we're making that motion to approve the. Oh, sorry. We did the approval of the. The C P I. The C P I. Now we just have to make the motion for the adjustments. Right, we're making the motion to approve the salary scale adjustments for licensed staff proposed by. Yes. All right, so motion by Carla, seconded by Andy. Audience. Nope. Four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're on to see. My list isn't. Okay, so we, so the first one on my list here is a motion to approve for paraprofessionals, right?
No, that's invited. I'm sorry. Because I knew you were expecting it out. So I did support there for one. Following your agenda, yeah.
Are. Do you want me to? Oh, it's been updated in real time?
I guess so.
Oh, well, I didn't even know it was updated in real time. It's.
Okay.
It should be updated.
Recommended that the board per the bucket of allocated funds of C P I five percent.
Hold on, just hold on.
Your motions. I think we're just better.
Okay, so. Just hold on a second, please. No, I just want to get to. Why? Go ahead. Okay, so the way. Yeah, so. This is a motion to approve an increase for support staff in the amount of five percent of their total current salaries. Excellent. Say that louder.
Yeah.
And so we know exactly what we're doing. The motion is to approve an increase for support staff in the amount of five percent of their total current salaries or approximately forty-three thousand nine hundred and one dollars with the distribution of the pool among support staff to be determined by the district administrator.
Excluding paraprofessionals.
Excludes paraprofessionals. This motion excludes paraprofessionals.
Hold on.
I think I got it, right?
You got it.
Yes. We will give you the language.
I will second that.
Discussion. Back to Paul. No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next motion. Paraprofessionals. Motion to approve a C P I increase of eight percent for paraprofessional staff. Motion by Carla, seconded by.
Okay.
Audience. Yes, ma'am.
So C P I, some more price effects?
It's an inflation indicator.
How it's gonna be different?
We are, you can go up to, no, no, you can go up to eight percent. We as a board can decide if we're gonna go one, two, three, four, we're giving whatever we decide the percentage of it is. Understand what you're saying. Yeah.
I just see when you say the, the C P I, it's a set number and it.
It's stylized. It's stylized. Okay, anything else? All right. All in favor? Aye. Five to zero. Last one. Motion to approve a C P I increase of four percent for administrators.
Second.
There we are. Carla, no. Motion by Carla, seconded by, was that Andy?
No.
Oh, Danielle. Audience, we're very, we're being very meticulous about how we're doing this. So. No, no, I always, it wasn't even you. Rob, this is how we do every meeting. We go back to it. So, all right, board. All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero. Now we are going to, is that it? I see department updates. George hasn't, all right, see, have we did that already? Future agenda topics. What did I say about future? Oh, yeah, let's put Tamika. Where it happened. I can't remember. I'll call one of y'all as my representatives now. I will call it. All right, six. A is visitor participation. You may speak on a non-agenda item at this time. State law and or board policy may limit the school board's response. You have two minutes. Go. Going once, going twice. Three. Nine. I, pardon me? Mr. Birmingham.
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Hey, thanks for listening. I just have a, a quick comment. On behalf of the eighth grade teachers and the eighth grade graduating class, we would like to extend our extreme thanks to Ms. Lindsay Johnson, who helped so much in supporting the eighth grade Washington DC trip. We now have seventy-five students who are going to be attending out of the hundred and thirteen eighth graders. And when we first brought this to the attention of the staff and students, one of the things that I really wanted to make sure was that every kid would have the opportunity to participate in this great field trip, regardless of financial needs that they may need. And I worked well with Lindsay and we made it happen. So I would just want to extend my extreme thanks to her on behalf of the eighth grade class and the eighth grade teachers. Thanks to her diligence and, and knowledge of monies and, and making sure that every kid had the opportunity. It is greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Mr. Birmingham, are you gonna come back alive from seventy-five kids with you in DC?
Yes, we, we plan to do that. And believe it or not, we, we have a five AM flight. And so kids will have to be at Glen Hills by two thirty. And so that'll, it'll, it'll be an experience. They won't have very much sleep.
So just stay up.
Yeah. And for the last time, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. I'm not calling you on it. So a motion to adjourn.
I object.
Thank you.
I don't know that I understand what.
I get it. I get it. Right. All in favor?
Motion.
Thank you, everybody. Do I have any things that I need to sign by tomorrow?